Good morning, everybody. Welcome to the July 25th, 2024 School Board of Manatee County Workshop. I'd like to officially call us into order. On the agenda, we have public comments. We do not have any public comments, so we will skip item number two, public comments, and move directly to item number three, getting into the workshop. First order business is the Audit Committee Quarterly Report to the Board as well as... CRI, I know you all have a payroll audit update. Whoever wants to go first, up to you all. So come on down.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members. You are receiving the payroll report presented to you this meeting. I am bringing a recommendation from the Audit Committee that it be approved. We found one item of concern, and it's the way it's handling exceptions to time sheets. And it wasn't that it was necessarily being done wrong, it wasn't being done consistently. So we have a recommendation that Mark will expand on more. But the point I want to bring out is, you know, my wife is retired. I've been with the School Board Associated for many years. And years ago, payroll was a mess, or an absolute mess. And to get through this look, this review with one low-risk exception is really a tribute to the staff and the leadership that has helped bring it back around. That's the last item on our '24 Audit Plan, '23-'24, finishing that up. The next thing we'll be doing and seeing in our September meeting is the post-audit reviews for the procurement contract we did, the contract compliance, and the MTC financial aid. Every time you do one of these, there's few open items, things to follow up. Are you going to do this? We're trying to put the closed on things and signed, sealed, and delivered. You approved the engagement letter with CRI at your last board meeting. I apologize, you guys went too fast. I saw it at the end of the agenda, and I says, "Well, if I show up at six, I'm okay." Oh, well. But it is the fifth year of their five-year contract. They did bring a new master service agreement, which will carry over to any engagement with separate engagement letters. For this '24-'25 Audit Plan, we start off with the sales surtax, which is required. We'll be moving into that as soon as the documentation is available. We're looking at facilities and maintenance. This has been put off so that we could finish the other planning audit from the other firm. Going into human resources and compliance, and then the internal accounts. Internal accounts hasn't been audited or looked at by the Audit Committee for two years. Last year, they were pretty intense with the external auditor. But what we're looking at for this year is going to be changes, new principles, new bookkeepers, other items that have caused perhaps a disruption in the flow. It does two things. Number one, it lets them know we're looking at it. But number two, it gives everybody involved a little bit of assurance that what somebody is receiving is intact, that what somebody's signing out through a retirement or a transfer is appropriate. So that's what we're doing with those. The facilities, educational planning, construction audit is very close to completion, I understand. They have a few items they're clearing up, and hopefully we'll have it to you soon. We're waiting for that before we go into facilities so that we can see what they did, what their scope was, what their findings were, and make sure we don't go back over the same thing again. There's other areas that we're looking at, but we don't want to repeat anything. We don't need to go reinvent the wheel, so we're waiting on that. We've got the RFP for Internal Audit Services for a five-year period, starting next year, starting for '25-'26. Again, CRI is in the last year of their five-year, the last time we went out to bid, they had a five-year contract. This is the last year for them. We are doing that. I'm meeting with Deputy Superintendent Sellers, the Purchasing Director, and myself to try and make sure the language is appropriate, the language is clean, it doesn't have stuff from external and internal language mixed up so that we take it to the Audit Committee in September, I hope. Otherwise, it'd be November before we could see it again. So we're pushing to get the September meeting, to have that here. Get it in your hands so that you look at it in a timely fashion instead of having to push or rush. We do want to have the request out in the late fall, November, December at most. Give them time to get back to us, give them time, the winner of the bid, to organize, get back and get set up. So that's what we're hoping for there. We've also been looking for additional Audit Committee members. Ms. Foreman and one of the other members, Ms. Metzner, met with one that they're apparently very pleased with. I haven't had a chance to individually talk with them yet, but the report I got is yay. So we should have four members for not-too-distant future, and still looking for others. And I'm going to stop for questions before bringing Mark up to present the payroll report. Any questions for me?
I have one.
Yeah, go ahead.
On line one, you said that time sheet exception reports was the only real...
It's the only thing that was reported.
Awesome. And everything that you looked at was through the '24 school year? '23-'24?
Yes.
So you've gotten all the data you need for the '23-'24 school year then?
That's what I was saying. This is the last of the things we had on our list to do for that school year, other than the post-audit reviews to close out what we've already had issued earlier in the year.
So that was everything through June?
June 30th.
30th. Okay. So after the close of the books, I'm guessing you got all the data you needed?
We'd look at real-time data.
Right.
Now, the sales tax, the tax we did last year was based on the '23 report. We can't do the '24 report until it's there. So some of that is there now. The payroll department was real-time, the contract compliance, procurement. We looked at what was happening at the time we came in and looked.
Okay.
So it was not stale. It's as fresh as it could be, looking at it. The surtax report is a year.
Year behind.
After year is just the nature of it.
Okay.
But we have received all the data and information. That's one of the advantages we find is having used the same firm. Everybody knows each other, everybody knows how they go. We do need to take an active look. You always need to look again, see what's out there, see what's competitive, but that has made it a lot smoother.
By doing it real-time, it makes it smoother too?
Yes.
So, okay, so you've got reports basically on a quarterly basis or real-time, like you're saying? Okay. All right. That's all I have. Thank you.
Any other board comments? I want to thank you. Just thanks for what you all in the committee do. I appreciate, you know, you said it with the facilities, the maintenance, you know, that not to redo anything they've already been doing and done. I appreciate that's from a staff standpoint. And then thank you for the recommendation for the RFP, and when you all would like to see that put out. And we'll make sure we get you on the September calendar to then work out with the board how, you know, what we need to do for that RFP, and so, thank you very much. Oh, I'm sorry.
I have a question. Maybe Ms. Foreman or the legal counsel can answer. What are the legal requirements of the Audit Committee? My understanding is that we are required to have an Audit Committee, and their legal function is to recommend an auditor? Is that... or what exactly is the... Anybody know the answer to that question?
Just that you have the annual audit and it be verified by, you know, an internal auditor.
By an internal auditor. So is there a legal requirement to actually have an Audit Committee? Or like a citizens Audit Committee? It seems to be in the past, I...
It's not a legal requirement.
It's not a legal requirement.
Best practice.
It's best practice, okay. And we've decided to do that on this board, just...
Starting about 10 years ago.
About 10 years ago, when the...
When we were about taken over by the state, we figured it'd be a good idea.
Okay.
But just so you know, the statute you might be referring to is the Auditor Selection Committee.
Okay.
And that is by statute and has to have a board member. And we, the board, decided to use the Audit Committee as members of that Auditor Selection Committee. And that is for the external auditor.
For the external auditor, okay.
So...
Not CRA, which is our internal auditor.
Right. However, their charter calls for the Audit Committee to be involved in the Auditor Selection Committee and take on whatever other auditing engagements, you know? So the plan is to use Auditor Selection Committee.
Great. All right. Thank you.
I would add one more item. They also were given the mission of the sales surtax review.
Okay.
So when that got passed, it was with proviso that the use of the funds were, you know, reviewed by an external group. So that was tacked on as well to the Audit Committee.
Great. All right. Thank you. That's all I have. Thanks.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you much, Ms. Daniels. Ms. Ellis, come on up. I may have stolen your thunder a little bit, but it's all good. Glad there's not a lot of thunder.
Morning, everyone. See you again two days later. So before I get into the report, I want to...
We'll reserve you a seat next time.
Yeah. Talk about the report. So what we did is, you'll see a little bit different format in this report. About four or five years ago, the current report you're used to seeing, we changed based on feedback from the Audit Committee and some of the members at the time on how to structure it. And we were kind of moving a little bit more consistent in how we provided the reports. Between there and now, a lot of the reports started to get very repetitive. Information was requested by some Audit Committee members, and the executive summary that was already in the report. It didn't flow as good as you would have some in the background section. And then when you get in the testing, you'd have more background and more detail that was kind of more for the work papers, but that was kind of what was requested and had been done before, which added a lot more time in creating the reports, reviewing the reports on our end, on the signed Audit Committee liaison to the audit management. So we want to make our reports a little bit more structured, how we traditionally have them at the firm. I worked with Ginger since she was the Audit Committee liaison to this audit. We took an example of a previous audit that we did and compared it, and we worked, her and I worked through it, and she had some good recommendations, and also talked with Jim about what we'd like to see in the report so that the end user, which is the Audit Committee and then the Board, has, really, what's the objective, what's the scope, what's the conclusion? What are, you know, what are highlighted, the exceptions or the findings? And then, you know, what detail is in the scope? So that's kind of why this report looks a little bit different in format. And, you know, kind of I'll walk through it a little bit, but that was something that we worked together, the Audit Committee and myself, to make sure that we had a report that they felt was more user-friendly and that could identify the items that they needed, you know, within a report. So as Jim mentioned, that we had one item that was an observation that had to do with time card, time sheet exception reports. So we found that they were working throughout the pay cycle exceptions, and you'll see that on page 13, the matrix, which we added this matrix in there where before, you'd have to kind of read through the report to kind of find where items were at or exceptions were. So now we're highlighting them in a matrix so that you could go right to what the exception was. But we found that management was working it, they just were not keeping the last version of it prior to time card approvals. So it was, would be difficult to demonstrate or show that those were cleared before approving the time card. So we had to do additional testing where we selected a sample, and all those were cleared. So we felt that the rating of low was appropriate because they were being cleared. Now, if we went through and saw that they weren't cleared and there were issues, then that rating probably would have been higher. But it was just more of a documentation of management keeping that final version of that exception report to demonstrate they'd been cleared. So they've already responded, that they would keep that in there prior to it so that you could see that, yes, they're cleared. Because when we went and did this audit five years ago, this was an item that came up where they weren't being cleared. And then when we did the post-audit review, we found that versions were being kept throughout the last day of processing where it was easy to see, yes, all them were clear because there was nothing on the report. Or if it was on the report, it wasn't from that previous payroll period. This time, it was a little bit more difficult to tell those were cleared since that was not being kept. But management was able to demonstrate that those were cleared, so that's why the rating was low. And then you could see on the last couple pages, attachment A on 15. So we, I worked with Ginger. She really wanted to make sure that we have a scope and detailed our procedures, since we're not having, we changed the format. So within this, if it was an exception, you would see it in the observation matrix. And if it was an exception, then it's that item, there are no issues with it. So it's really a report by exception with this observation matrix. Instead of saying, "No, no exceptions," or "All cleared," we wanted to provide this attachment at the end to kind of give you the detail of what we tested throughout the audit and the steps we did, and kind of make it a little bit easier to read instead of burying the items throughout the report. So if you have any questions on the report, or the...
I just have a, just a generic, maybe Dr. Weisong can answer that. When you're talking about payroll, is there any time that you're looking at contracted labor? Or is it just our... because I know we have contracted labor that we pay. I'm just curious. We don't look at, you don't look at that part, right?
No, I'm just looking at employees.
Just employees, okay. That's all I want to make sure, because I know we have contracted labor as well. So, okay.
I just wanted to ask, when you say the time sheets, I'm picturing the old paper time sheets. We're talking about...
In PeopleSoft.
We're talking in PeopleSoft, and the most recent one in PeopleSoft is not capped?
The report for the, so they produce the report throughout the, each day, and the payroll specialists clear those. They work with the different schools or departments they're assigned to clear these exceptions. Like maybe someone didn't punch out, you know, and then they punched in the next day, so it shows they worked in it. There's all sorts of exceptions. So they work those with them. And then the last day before processing payroll, they work the remaining ones. They just weren't keeping, rerunning the report to show, yes, they're all cleared. You know, before we press the button and say, "Everything's good," and process payroll.
Okay.
So that kind of would demonstrate any remaining ones were corrected so that you feel comfortable that you process payroll with all the exceptions cleared.
Was there a procedure last time payroll was audited that is not in place now? And if so, do you know how that happened, that it dropped?
Yeah, I just think it wasn't being kept. I don't know if there was a formal procedure, but it just, a different payroll administrator, so...
Do you have a recommendation to keep our procedures in place so that they don't get dropped? We've had big turnover in payroll, so, yeah.
Yeah, I know they do have a payroll, I believe, processing this, but I could go back and talk and just recommend that.
Yeah, when you do the post-audit review, it would be...
Yeah. If I follow up on it, I could see if that...
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
Because this is one procedure, but we could have something bigger. And I just thank you for a great report, and I do like the new format as well, so, thank you.
I was just going to agree. I really like this format. That's it. Thank you so much for that.
Yep.
Dr. Weisong, is it, I was reading in the, on page 15, under the exception, it says, "Most of the time, exceptions are due to missed punches or punches out of order on time sheets by hourly employees. These are spotted and corrected the following day. There are also instances in which an employee might take vacation, but also ended up working that day." Are we still doing like paper punch cards or something? I mean, is there not like an electronic automated way maybe to, we could, I don't know. I'm just, it was just an interesting observation.
Leaves are submitted, the comment about vacation, all leave goes through the computer system. Mr. Rinaldi may be able to speak to anything, but certainly teachers aren't punching in and out. I don't know if there's anything unique at Matsky.
Yeah, I mean, we do have the digital time clock where the custodians basically go on their computer to sign in and sign out. Food service does the same thing on their point-of-sale terminals, signing in and signing out. So I don't know the physical...
Yeah, there's no physical punching. It's all digital. And then I know transportation has iPads that they use that have to be batched. So sometimes, so sometimes that causes an issue with the batching of it.
Okay.
They show up on the exception report and get reviewed as well. But, yeah, no one's...
The term punching was just kind of a general...
Yeah. Digital, yeah.
I'm envisioning hanging chads, you know? Punch cards and stuff like that, because it says it's done out of order, and it just seemed like we're still, because I can remember, you know, having an hourly job, and you would, some days you'd go in on a Wednesday and you'd punch the car, but it was really Tuesday, and that messed everything up. And it seems like, I was like, wow, we're still doing that, but apparently we're not, so, okay. Great. That's all I had. Thank you.
Then, two things I did not get to check, that came up in Audit Committee that I did not correct. So as far as the testing and results and observations, executive summary, page three, we have a rating in here as satisfactory, but we also have one as strong, and we don't use it as often, which we probably should. And we recognize that we probably should apply that, and we talked about that at Audit Committee, that the rating on this should be strong based on what we saw in controls, what they put in place, and what they're monitoring within the department. So we feel, you know, I think a lot of times Audit Reports get recognized when things don't go well with certain ratings, but that we probably should recognize them and use that rating. And that was talked about Audit Committee quite a bit, that that would be appropriate. And then I needed to add on the last page, PeopleSoft utilization, that we provided that questionnaire to the payroll department and, or the payroll administrator and department. So I needed to add those on the final version of the report. So that didn't get changed in time for this draft.
What did you not change on that last sentence you said?
Include the, we're going to put, provided the payroll administrator and payroll department, the questionnaire, because the whole department reviewed it, not just the administrator. So it involved a lot more people in that process. So those two will get changed.
Think, was that it? I've got a question for you, but it's off-topic of this report.
All right.
So, on what you all do, of course. So we talked about the sales surtax, and you all, of course, audit that sales surtax. Can you explain to the Board, to us, like, what does that entail? Like, when you all are looking at the sales surtax, obviously, we went to the voters. We said, "Hey, we want this extra half cent. It's going to go to school, property, et cetera. We're going to have it audited to make sure that we're doing that." What do you all look for? How do you do it to determine, are we spending that money correctly?
So aside from making sure the revenue coming in matches the deposits and everything, but when we get into it, we have, there's different projects that are defined as like construction projects, and then you have like your IT-type purchases and other things, as well as what goes to the charter schools. So we do typically take like a sample based on dollar amount of the project and then select individual invoices, and then verify that that makes sense, that that invoice is applied to that project. And then we look at the project and see, does that make sense based on the resolution and what's the requirement of it? So I think we look at, you know, most, construction at a school is pretty obvious. I think in the past, we've seen things, construction on this building here, which we brought up to the Audit Committee, and it was determined that should not be sales surtax. Or at the Transportation Center, there was an item. I think school bus, or bus purchases in the past was also identified and discussed at Audit Committee and determined that wasn't proper use of the funds. IT items has been up for discussion many times, but it's always been getting a legal opinion that the IT use was appropriate. And then charter schools were doing the same. We're seeing that the charter schools now, I think about three years ago, they moved to reimbursable, that they're submitting receipts for their purchases and that those purchases were appropriate based on the resolution, but also state statute, which allows them some other, within the guidance for that. So those are the things that we do, make sure that they're in line with the resolutions said was appropriate for those purchases.
When you, when you're pulling samples, do you, just for my curiosity, it, when you say like the, like a project threshold, the dollar amount, is there, hey, anything over X amount of dollars we pull? So that may be 50 projects, it may be only 10?
Yeah, so every...
Depending on the year, you know what I mean?
We at least pull one for every project or IT item. And if it's a dollar threshold, I kind of do a thing where it depends on the dollar threshold, gets more pulls. But like if it's a construction project, it's usually a pay application, which is a large dollar, and it's pretty easy to tell that's for that, that building. And we've done the construction audit before, where we've looked at pay applications, so we feel comfortable with the way those are reviewed and approved. You know, IT items, it might be... Um, you know, IT items, it might be, um, you know, one-time purchase. Um, so some of those, it might be a high dollar amount, but the invoice might be only one for that purchase. Where if that dollar amount, sometimes we might select two or three. You know, we don't select two or three, cause there's only one invoice for maybe computer purchases or, um, a software that's being used for students or other, you know, purposes or leases or things like that. So we make sure that we are sam, we at least pick one invoice from everything and then we evaluate every project. Um, if it fits the, um, resolution. So.
Okay, thank you. Board, any other questions, thoughts?
Chairman, may I just, um, uh, echo the audit chairs' thank you of the, of the payroll team? Um, uh, the complexity of our system is, um, pretty enormous. Um, having now been here for the planning of a school year. Um, we have seven employees in the payroll department and we are the largest employer in the county. And then when you tack on that we have ten-month employees and ten-and-a-half month employees and eleven-month employees and twelve-month employees and that each of those employees has two or three different options for how many checks they get based on, um, their situation. And then some are salaried, some are hourly. The, the complexity in that, uh, office is extraordinary. Uh, and so, um, uh, th- those folks work very hard. Having talked to two payroll administrat, because we had a payroll administrator change since I arrived. Um, both the people in that job take this, uh, responsibility to get everybody paid on time and accurately very, very seriously. Um, and so I just, uh, I wanna, uh, I wanna be sure our, our payroll folks know we appreciate them. Um, and certainly the audit validates their work. Thank you.
Absolutely. Yeah, you are correct. Um, so I think we're good. Thank you very much. Appreciate, appreciate you and everything y'all do. And Mr. Daniels, thank you very much. You can hang out for the rest if you want. Um, so, um, also that moves us from, uh, our first item to our second item, which is board discussion regarding the audit committee and citizen finance oversight committee. Um, so I know there's a couple of things, um, I'm getting to the, uh, items. I know there's a couple of things that the, um, citizens financial oversight committee, the CFoc, did request from us. So I wanna make sure we go over that. I told them at the meeting that we would do that, this board meeting. So I wanna make sure we cover that, um, board members. And then, um, this is a time, I think we've talked about this forever. Um, and, and looking at, at both audit committees, um, and, and board members here have discussed, um, thoughts about the structure, et cetera. Um, so I'm willing to, to definitely listen and, and we can do, have some of that discussion, um, potentially if we want to. Um, so let's go ahead and jump into first, the recommendations from the, um, CFoc. Which I believe, I don't know if that's on our agenda or not.
We have a printed copy. Is it on?
Perfect. I mean, I got it on my screen here. Um, so if you don't have it, I do have it. Um, so they had three recommendations at the end of their, their report that we obviously approved. First one is, um, uh, for charter school to be able to send, um, the charter school enrollment um, to the, uh, to the CFoc so they can look to see, um, to make sure that, that they did get the right amount that they were supposed to get based on enrollment and the dollars coming in. Um, so we'll start with that one. Anybody have any comments?
So we're not talking about the charter? We're talking about other requests?
Well, when we originally had the meeting, when we originally had the meeting with CFoc and the workshop, they brought up, I'll do wanna get to the charter later.
Okay.
But they brought up the recommendations to us first. And so I wanted me, and I told them at that point, we'll discuss it at this meeting, cause this is, was gonna be more so that avenue. And so I wanna go with the recommendations first. Then we'll jump into-
Okay.
The other stuff. Yeah. Um, so any comments, thoughts about giving them the charter school allocation? Um, does everybody have that in front of them?
I don't know.
What they're asking?
No.
Okay. So I'll go ahead and read-
Can I get a copy of this for the rest of our board?
And, and board members, if you're, if we're on, if you're on, I'll tell you the date it was in. It was the June thirteenth workshop. Um, so if you're in, if you're in, you know, ours, the June thirteenth workshop. And it was the annual report board review is what the title of it is. CFoc annual report board review. And then the first link in there is the CFoc recommendations.
On your agenda?
On the agenda of June thirteenth workshop.
Um, I guess I'd like to understand if they're not being given this information, what's the reasoning why? Like, you know what I mean?
For the charter?
Yeah.
Yeah.
I'd like to, you, do you know what I mean? Like I, I'm sure there's two sides. So like, I'd like to understand, like if they're not being given this, but they're requesting this, why aren't they getting it?
Um, they're requ, they're requesting, they've never gotten it.
Okay.
So they're requesting us to make sure they do get it. If we want, if, if that's what we want them to get.
Okay. But what I want to understand is if they are requesting it, is, is the district, is the district just saying, we're not going to give it to you because the board hasn't said yes? Or is the district saying, we're not going to give it to you because it's not pertinent to your job? What, what is the reasoning that they have not gotten it? Is what I'm trying to understand?
Great question. That I, that I don't know off the top of my head. Ms. Sellers, yeah?
I believe I can possibly speak to it. Um, I think Kevin Chapman might also have this information. However, um, there is some information that, uh, there's required information that the charter schools are required to give to us, but, um, I believe that this particular detail of information is not something that we get from the charter schools. So it would have to be a request to the charter school, something specific. Um, from what I have understood, we can ask them for it. Um, uh, it, it, from our, from our understanding, they don't have to provide it if they don't want to. So, because there's only certain requirements that the state provides them to have to. It's just like, um, when we give them the FEFP distribution, we're required to give them the FEFP-
When you're saying provide it, are you talking about?
Information and reports and detail for certain reports. They end up reporting certain information straight to the state.
Okay.
Um, and so lots of times the district is just, um, a, a pass-through of certain information or collect certain information that is already, um, requested or required for them to provide to us. You know, for their allocations, to be able to do reimbursements, that kind of thing. So it's just something that we don't have, uh, from those charter schools. But we can at least formally request that the CFoc is asking for it.
Okay. And let's say that you did do that. How much additional time would it take the district to ask how all the documents and then pass them along? Is there any other kind of, um, administrative work that have to be done in order to make them ready for the citizens financial oversight committee? Or would it just be, you'd hand them over?
I believe at this point, if they asked for it, we would just hand it over. And then they, if, if the, if the committee working on it still had questions or something, I believe we would be the, um, would assist, our, um, team would assist with sending those requests back to the charter schools.
Okay. Alright, thank you.
Thank you. Yep.
I know in the past they had requested some information on what they were spending and reports were provided handwritten, some were handwritten, some were not, on how they allocated the payroll portion and some building rents that were paid. And I think that kind of goes back to what this is alluding to is the charter says that they are to watch, uh, the millage wherever basically it's spent. And if the charter schools are getting a good proportion of that money, whether they're paying, you know, using it on teachers or STEM or, uh, arts, I think it would be, uh, to their benefit to provide the CFoc basically the same kind of detail on how they spend their money in the charter, whether they're legally bound by statute or not. But the charter says, if you receive this money, you have to account for it. Uh, in my opinion, solely my opinion, they're getting it, but there's no accountability for how they're using it. They don't have to report to the state how they're using it. They don't have to report to you, our district, and they don't have to report to the CFoc. So I think it's a big hole in this thing. And I think that we need to be able to see how they're spending that money. Um, whether it's on arts, payroll, or, or any other uh, initiative that they use it for, that falls under the same guidelines that we do. You know, and I know they don't have all these rules, like the state doesn't require them to report like we do. But this is a different bucket of money. It's the taxpayer, all of its taxpayers, of course, but this is an additional mill. And charter schools came and said, we want our share. We want our fair share. And they got their fair share, but they've never been held to account how they're spending it. So that's what I think the intent of the CFoc is, is to say, hey, you've been getting this millage since, uh, well, and their ask is since twenty twenty-one. They want to see what, where they've spent that to present. I don't know if going backwards is gonna be beneficial, but I think it would give us historical where they've been spending it. Um, but it's supposed to be used in their arena, just like it is in our arena. To retain teachers, to, uh, increase student achievement and, and all of that. We don't know what their teacher turnover rate, their staff turnover rate. Um, I mean, just the numbers we got today, uh, this morning from Dr. Weisong. MSA is not performing very well. Well, they're getting how much of the millage. You know, so in my opinion, I think the charter on this millage in particular, this committee should be allowed to see how much we are giving them. And then they should be, uh, responsible of giving to CFoc where they've spent it. That's the way this board member feels. I mean,
please.
I don't know about the rest of you, but-
Uh, Ms. Messenger threw her hand up before you did, sorry.
Alright, I'm just gonna keep doing it.
I should keep doing it.
Just keep it up.
Um, yeah, that's a good plan. Um, I'm not disagreeing with your point of view that they should provide that information, but the question is not whether that's my opinion or not, it's whether it's legally allowed. Right? I mean, like, I'm, I'm, I'm not disagreeing with you. I think anybody that's receiving public funds, like I think the private schools should too. You're receiving public funds? I think you should have to report all that information. I'm with you on all of that. And I think you have an interesting point of, well, this is a separate millage. So I guess it doesn't really matter though, what I think about that. My question was why isn't it happening? And if it's a legal reason, then my opinion doesn't, once again, matter because it's a legal reason. So I need to understand legally.
Right.
Is, is there a call for the district to say, no, this is a voted on additional one mill? And we are requiring this information and you must provide it?
Yeah, well, I think because of how it passed, it's a reasonable requirement.
Right.
So it's, it's not something covered by a statute or whatever, but it passed based on a citizen, independent citizen review of how the funds are spent and the outcomes even. So I think it's a legal, uh, requirement.
Okay. So then if that's true, then I support doing this and asking for that information. And that's all, I mean, and we can say defensively, there is a legal, you, you, maybe not the rest of the money, whatever, the law says whatever. Agree with it, disagree with it, my opinion on it doesn't matter. But if we have a legal opinion that says, no, this part, you must rep, supply, then to me, this is an easy discussion. Let's just ask for it and say, you're required. And our attorney says, you are required.
So, um, our finance director is listening from afar at this point.
Mm-hmm.
I believe the information that they're asking for is related to enrollment and staffing information.
Okay.
And in the past, the request that, that the finance had been receiving from CFoc was related to what had been, it wasn't on the salary parts that had been spent. It was on basically the information that had, or the expenditures that had been, um, funded by STEAM. The, the, you know, the arts, those other programs, everything but the salaries and benefits. So, um, if, if they're, they're basically now asking for the whole groups. So we can definitely, um, do that same request, because that same request was coming in also, I believe, for the rest of the districts to get that more on a, um, quarterly basis. Well, we're getting ready after this meeting today. We'll be sending the year end for just this past fiscal year to them, but we had to wait till this meeting ended first, which is gonna be salaries and, um, the expenditures that they're used to seeing related to the, the STEAM program in addition to the rest of what referendum does pay for.
I'm not really looking to add a whole bunch of work to your team though. That's the thing. Like as long as it's like a pass-through and it's not a tremendous amount more for, like that's the other hindrance would be, but you said it would just be a pass-through, then-
For the charter school request, we would just be making that request. And when they sent it back, we would just be forwarding that up.
Okay.
And not to jump in before Ms. Forman, but I don't think it's just, in my opinion, it should be, any dollar that they got from the millage should be reported back to the CFoc. I don't think it should just be, uh, like they said on this, recommendations was, uh, enrollment. I think any dollar they get, they need to be, uh, providing information on how they spent that. And, and justify it, just like we have to. And I just think that would be beneficial to them and beneficial to the taxpayer to see that this committee is actually looking at every dollar, not just what went to the district, but also the charter. Cause they get a big chunk of that money.
Ms. Berry?
Um, this is a question for the attorneys. If we request this money, or request this information and they, uh, refuse to give it to us, um, and do we have any recourse? I mean, we, can, can we withhold their check?
Mr. Chairman, members, the, uh, all charters are governed by your charter contracts. Since this is my eighth day and fifth in the office, uh, if you'll give me a little time to take a look at those contracts, I can provide you with a more complete uh, legal analysis of that. But I will say that in general, charters do, are, are required pursuant to state statute to provide annual financial audits that we do review, uh, from the, the district level as, as the charter sponsor. We can do that. Uh, and we would, the one area that, uh, charter sponsors do have considerable, and it may be the only area for charter oversight is in the financial area. We make sure that those dollars are appropriately spent, uh, by the charters. And if they're not, we can take action uh, against those charters by contract. So that's, that's the route I would recommend to you at this point.
Alright.
Um, I'll follow up on that, that being, um, because we do get the annual financials. They are audited from, uh, from the, from the charters. And all charters are not created equal. Um, and some of them are sophisticated in their financial reporting and some of them are not. And I can tell you that the, um, because I have specifically looked for the, um, the CFoc and the, um, sales tax revenue um, on their reports. And it's just, some of them is just not there. It's not broken out. And so we are not in a position to go audit the audit, you know, um, that's certainly not, not good. Um, I have asked that, um, that, you know, because they meet with the, uh, with charter schools every year, you know, that they do a little training on, uh, on what, what their audit reports should look like, their financial reports. But, uh, but that's been going on for
Decades.
Well, not decades, but, you know, but certainly as far back as I can remember, you know, and really nothing's gotten- And really, nothing's gotten any better. But so on the sales tax side, it used to be we'd hand them a check and they'd walk away. And so on the, because of the sales tax audits and the recommendation of the audit committee, they did, the district switched to a reimbursement procedure, okay? But but that was a whole different ballgame, because up until this year, it was not really technically required. Am I correct on that? It, we were doing a block grant, you know, where we were determining the amount that they would get.
Right, so that has just changed this back, just this past year. And our finance director does, has just clarified with me, the charter schools, they do give us their total expenditures annually. What they, what they refuse to do is to give it to us quarterly, which is when we give the CFOC their information related to referendum. But that the 2223 was given, when the, when 2223, the final data was given for them to do the report, the charter school detail was in there. We just don't have it annually when they, when they had requested to be able to see this information. So like, when we get ready to give them the information after this meeting on 2324, they will get the charter school information that includes salaries as well. But all of that is only, basically, we get that once, and that is annually at the end of the year, fiscal year.
I mean, they might have the staff to do quarterly and real-time reporting back to us. So, okay, I'm sorry, I jumped in there, Ms. Foreman. Were you done?
Sure.
Okay. Did you have your hand up? I thought I saw it. No, okay.
I have a final thought.
Yep.
Legally, really challenge you, Mr. Penley. On their charters, because of this millage, is there, I mean, we renew these charters all the time. Is there something that we can do when we renew their charter to say that they're responsible to provide the district and any audit, whether it's CFOC or Audit Committee, their financials? Like Ms. Foreman said, some of them are just handwritten, you know? I mean, is it something that we can put in their charter that they are required to provide? If they get $10,000 from, just rounding, giving a number, they get $10,000 from the district, from the voted millage, they need to show us where they spent that $10,000. I mean, is it something that we could write into their charter at some point? Or is there a blanket charter that we use for every one of these? I guess I would go to you, Dr. Weisong. Do we have a, I know every charter might have a little bit different language, but typically, they're all the same.
Correct, Mr. Chairman. I respond by saying that the state standard form charter contract is already in place. But I'm, Mr. Dye and I were conferring earlier, and because you have the local one-mill in addition to that, that does not come through the Florida Education Finance Program, the FEFP, I would like to have some time to study that and look to see how, typically, under state statute, if you're going to be voting for a local effort, additional half-cent sales tax surcharges, those sorts of things, and the one-mill addition, those would have to be on a referendum put before the voters. So I would want to see how that language was directed for that one-mill and determine, based on that, how your reporting should be under the contract, and then consider contractual amendments with your charters as appropriate at that time.
Okay, because I have the referendum language here, and it does not depict district schools or charter schools. It just says the one-mill, does not indicate how the reporting. I mean, you only get so many words for the ballot language. And we've already approved that ballot language for this upcoming vote. But my direction would hopefully be that we can have an addendum to their charter of saying that they need to report their millage directly to our-
I don't, I don't, I see what you're saying with this. I don't particularly think it's going to happen legally. I think they would fight that, because I don't think we can do that. Ms., Dr. Weisong had jumped in.
I was just going to note that with regards to our current charters, we've not had an issue getting information-
I was gonna ask.
-when we requested it. On the handful of things that have come up since I arrived last July 3rd, the charters have been very responsive to requests. I think the, I, you know, I think that the hypothetical is, if we made a request and a charter and its board and its legal counsel felt like that went too far, perhaps we'd get a refusal, and then the lawyers would take over and hash that out. But I think it's important for the board to be aware that's a possibility if you direct us to get more information from them. The other thing I want to add, and I think this is, again, that my team is, always wants to meet the board's expectations. I think that, you know, one of the, one of the gray areas is, how much information do we want charters to provide? So for example, this past year on the Arts and STEM Millage, the committee requested budget line detail for all transactions. So at X school quantity Y of Z was ordered at this cost or whatever. So very granular data. And that's fine. Again, we can provide whatever data, you know, the board wants us to provide. That, but the amount of time it would take a charter to comply with that request would be much greater than providing, again, a quarterly statement or whatever. So I think some of this is, what does the, what exactly does the committee want in order to fulfill its oversight responsibility? And then what, if any, guardrails does the board want to have as it relates to what the committee asks for? And all of this, to me, goes back to how much time, right? What's the impact on staff? Because sometimes it is a request, but sometimes it is churning data or following up on things. So, and I think that's part of the greater discussion is, what is audit? What is oversight? What's legally required? And what does the board want? And ultimately, what you want is what we want to be sure we're doing.
I'd say, I'd say, I agree with you. I think some of this is a bigger question of, because there's another request, the second one, is a bigger question on what's expected, what's given, like you mentioned, the line item spending, et cetera. I, I think we have spun off a little bit here on hypotheticals of charters not complying, et cetera. I think, like you said, I've never seen one, heard of one that has not, and has refused any of our requests. I think if we, if we ask them to simply, when you can, send your total spending from the millage so that it can be looked at just like everything else with everyone else, I think that's an easy thing to ask. I think we cross the bridge, if one does, say, no. Then we go from there. I hate to hypothetically say, how do we tackle this person saying no, whatever? And they may never do it. So I'm absolutely okay with just asking, hey, when you can, whether it be quarterly, semi-annually, annually, whatever, give us, give us your spending, just like we do with, here in the district, and that's it. And I'm going to, I would be shocked if nobody, if we got any kind of, you know, outrageous response or non-compliance.
Or refuse.
So.
The request on, that CFOC is asking on here is for years 2021 to present. And that might be going too far to go back.
I agree with you. I don't believe we should go backwards. I think it should be from now on forward. I mean, that's privy to what everybody else thinks, too. I mean, I don't, you're not going to be able to do anything going backwards, except-
Maybe 23, 24.
Add more, but if you want to do these last-
What are you going to do with that information?
I mean, that's what you're done. I would, yeah, I would say past, to me, it's done and over with.
23, 24 is what they're looking at.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, right now.
Right, right now.
Okay, that's fair.
That's a current year, I mean, yeah.
Right, I think 23, 24 would be doable. I think the chair would probably be okay with looking at that. I'm not speaking for her, she could speak for herself, but that would be a compromise, I think, would be done. So if we could just ask for that year, along with the data that they're requesting in the next one.
Well, are you, we haven't really talked, are you good with that? Asking charter schools to just, when they can, send?
Yeah, I have a couple, yeah, I'm okay generally, I had a couple of thoughts.
Okay, yeah, go ahead.
I'm just concerned, concerned about the administrative burden, as Dr. Weisong was talking about. And it's always nice to be able to provide oversight, but even auditors, for instance, I remember when I started looking at the audit reports, it says at the very bottom, there's always the caveat, right? It says, "We cannot guarantee that this report guarantees that you're not doing anything wrong, because we didn't look at every expenditure that you made."
Right, that's inherent risk of an audit is performed.
So, you know, when I look at, let's take the enrollment thing out of the, out of the equation just for a second. I can't believe we don't have enrollment on an annual basis for charter schools. We must have that somewhere. But anyway, but all this request for information, I mean, imagine the number of transactions that it must be for every dollar that's spent for the millage, and then every dollar for every charter school, that every can of, you know, every paint set, every, for the arts, every print, 3D printer, every technology piece of equipment. I mean, we're talking, are we not talking, Dr. Weisong, tens of thousands of transactions? Potentially, you know, I was, you know, I like to do analogies. I mean, I have a, I have a little guarantee, warranty service for my air conditioners, and the guys come out twice a year, and they look at my air conditioners, and they say, yes, there's an issue, we need to fix it, or no, we don't. And that costs a certain amount of money. I could have them come out every quarter, and they would say, well, Mr. Tatum, that's going to cost us some more money, right? I could have them come out every month, and they'd say, well, Mr. Tatum, that's more time, more money. So, you know, where do we, where do we draw this line here? Where, about how much information we're going to, we're going to ask from these people? I don't have, I agree with Ms. Prey in that the resolution seems to say legally that if the, see, if this money is supposed to have oversight, then the traditional public schools should be looked at, but also the charter schools should be looked at. But we, we have to find this, kind of like you were talking about, Mr. Cho, some line where we're just not overburdening the charter schools with an administrative burden and overburdening our staff with an administrative burden. And I don't think we've really thought through about the tens of thousands of transactions that we would be looking at. You know, are we trying to do a 100% survey of all expenditure? Or is it just more like an audit where we take a sample and look at what's being done? That's my general thought on that. I just don't want to overburden people with, it would be nice to be able to look at every transaction, but that's a huge administrative burden. And as far as the enrollment, is that really difficult to get? The enrollment at charter schools for the last few years, or is that?
Probably not. That was not a request that was initially asked. Again, our finance director, Kathy Miley, said that the charter schools' total expenditures for 2223 have been given to the CFOC, and our group has already sent the request to the charter schools for 2324. But in this enrollment data, this came off of this report here now, you know, that kind of information. So that will be a request that goes out for 2324.
I mean, of all the reports that get sent to the state, you think enrollment for a charter school would be one of them that would just be a standard? At the end of the year, there were
I'll look into that.
1,203 kids enrolled at Manatee School for the Arts, or something like that, but-
Right, I'll look into that for, to see-
I guess my big issue is I just don't want to administratively overburden people.
I do think there's a bigger, there's a bigger, there's a bigger discussion on, on just, hey, can we ask the charter schools for their information? I think that's a yes. The other question is, how deep of an information are we asking them for, et cetera? And that's something that is another discussion that still would line into everything else. So I want to, I just, we're kind of, I don't want to go off the rails. I just want to see, do we have consensus to say, can we ask the charter schools for information? We'll determine that what that information is maybe not right this second during this conversation, but are we good with that? Because I think if we move on to the second part of this request, still goes on with the information we're talking about. So we're still going to have more of that discussion. So I want to make sure with the first, like, are we okay saying, hey, charter schools, give us your information when you can, right?
I just want to say, you said that the CFOC's already gotten the 2223 information from all the charters.
The total expenditure, the total expenditure.
Just the total.
The total expenditures, correct. And our group in finance does have enrollment data on the charter schools, because we end up making payments on that. So that information can get put together and submitted when we send you the 2324 as well.
Thank you.
Or the CFOC as well.
Thank you. Okay, so we're good with that first request. We could definitely ask them, moving forward, or for 2324 expenditures from the, from the millage that they received, to let us take a look at that. Which moves us to the second one, which is for the request from the CFOC, would like to receive 100% of the millage fund expenditures for oversight, and to like, to take a look at that, which I'm assuming means the 51% that's given to teachers, et cetera, AFME, et cetera. And so, discussion thoughts?
This is one of the, go ahead, Ms. Foreman.
I just have a question, because they're saying that it will facilitate review and testing of data. What testing is CFOC doing with this data?
To be honest, they've had a hard time getting data. They got a, the last report that they did, they only got 12 or 15% of what was spent, not the entire percentage of any. They're saying it was only the arts or the-
That's, that's all CFOC had requested, was just the stuff that was related.
Right, I think there was a, I think there was kind of like a little miss-
The salaries had never been requested in the past, you know?
Okay.
Some of these recommendations are, like, the enrollment data the group could have given, CFOC never asked for that. It's, some of these recommendations are for, I feel, are new information that they want on a go-forward basis.
Well, I think, I think what, the breakdown in communication. I think there's been a big misunderstanding. And I've been at that meeting before with Mr. Christopher, and there was papers and spreadsheets and everything all over the place. What they've, I think there's a a breakdown on, maybe what they're asking for and what they're getting may not be matching. The intent for them, in their mind, is oversee, number one, oversee 100% of the referendum. And that's what this means, 100% of the millage expenditures, whether that's payroll, whether that's arts, whether that's STEM, whether that's curriculum, whatever. And then, if they see something on that, which I know they had questioned on an item that they thought was a capital expense that went into the millage. And there, I know they asked about that, don't know if that ever got changed at all. In particularly, talking about a piece of equipment that was at Manatee Auditorium, that was quite expensive. And then another piece of equipment that was a lift or some sort to change light bulbs in auditoriums and/or throughout the school. To me, that is a capital, not a millage expense. And did they get the sample pulled from that? I don't know if they ever asked to get the details on how that was broken out. The only thing that they were told was the referendum paid for a portion of it. That's all, we charged 12,000 of that piece of equipment to the referendum. The rest of it went to whatever bucket it went to. So I think that's why they want to see things. Of course, the payroll, that's a big chunk of the referendum, and they've not been able to see any of that. that's a big chunk of the referendum, and they've not been able to see any of that. Fifty-one percent of the referendum goes to payroll, they've not been able to see who gets that, or where it goes to.
I don't, I'll, I'll jump in real quick. I don't think they should see fifty-one percent of payroll and look at people's payroll to see if they got the right money. I think they, what their job is to say, district, you got ten dollars, did five dollars and fifty cents go to the two salaries? Yes, it did, check, we sent it to salaries, and it goes to salaries. So, I mean, I, my question is, does the CFoc wanna look at six thousand eight hundred employees' checks to make sure that they got what they were supposed to get each check, times twenty-four checks?
I'm guessing that's.
I mean, I don't know.
It's a refer, it, the referendum does not pay their sole, their one-hundred percent payroll.
And we just had a payroll report, we just had a payroll report done by an audit, right? That came back pretty much perfect, strong. I just, I don't, I don't, I don't see where that time that would be spent from this, for the CFoc to look at that portion, is worth it. I don't think, I don't think it's worth it, um, when we just had it done by CRI to see how payroll's being done, et cetera. The, the last thing I think, or the first thing we would know about, if there was something wrong with payroll, would be payroll, because the teachers, et cetera, the union, et cetera, is gonna say, wait a minute, you didn't give us this fifty-one percent. And so, I, so I just, I feel like that's time that they could be spending doing something else, that they don't need to be doing, looking at payroll. Which is, not only fifty-one percent of teachers, but the Afsmi and things like that. I mean, they've got people looking, the union is looking and checking, teachers look, I was a teacher, we look at every single paycheck and make sure it's right. And so, I, I don't, I don't think that that needs to be looked at. Time-wise, you're talking about sixteen hundred employ, I, I, I just, that's gonna be a whole lot.
I don't think sixteen hundred employees get it, not all sixteen hundred employees get it.
Well, there's three thousand teachers, so three thousand teachers get it.
Okay.
But, Ms. Messenger?
I'm just gonna say, I don't, um, this, this recommendation says that it, that it's, to adhere to the charter, I don't actually think the charter calls for that. The charter says, you know, oversight, oversight doesn't mean you get every single piece of every single thing. That's not what, to me, oversight would mean. And I was here when we made this charter. So, I don't feel like that aligns to what is here. I don't think that adheres, to use the words, adheres to what is here. Um, but I do think this actually speaks to the larger issue that this board has danced around, I don't know, multiple times. So let's just not dance around it. Is it better if we said, all of the financial pieces are audited by CRI, that audit is then produced to the CFoc every single year, and then the CFoc can deliver that? And any other outcomes that can arise, uh, in there, when they look through everything? Is it, is that a more appropriate way to handle this? You know, I know there's been lots of discussions about getting rid of one committee or the other, I, I don't think that that's necessary. But do I think it would be a less of a burden on staff if we just said, it's just gonna be a CRI audit, and all the financial stuff is gonna be done in this way, it's gonna be done every single year, just like the sales tax? They are going to, they can work with the Audit Committee, and the Audit, and, and the, they will receive, the Citizens Financial Oversight Committee will receive an audit on all the financials every single year, which then, it will provide the Citizens Financial Oversight Committee that information, know that there is oversight, they are reviewing the audit, so they will be able to look at all those different pieces that are tested. But it'll be in a manner that the district also knows how to maneuver and, and work through. And then it would still allow the Citizens Financial Oversight Committee to deliver that to us. And also any other, because there's not, it's not just financial, there are other pieces to it, and they could still do those pieces that would not be part of the financial audit part. The other pieces about grades, um, retention, those types of things that they look at, degrees, those would not necessarily be in an audit, but they could still deliver that information, and it might lessen their, their burden. It might lessen the district's burden, it might streamline things. I, I just think, you know, and I think it still meets the charter, and the expectations that the community has, if not more so. Because this is our, this is the auditing firm we use for everything else. So, to me, it makes more sense to do it in that manner, and then we don't have to have this conversation at all about what level of information do we, like, I, I don't, what level of information is appropriate, like, that's gonna be a really hard thing, and I can't imagine we're all even, ever gonna agree on that, you know? But if we said, hey, we trust this auditing firm, can we go that way instead?
I concur, just to, so then I'll have to repeat what you just said, so, I concur.
I'm a convert. I was against it before, but, um, but yes.
Well, this is like a.
Last year, I, I've, I've come to, uh, come to agree. I think you get a better product, you get it more timely, because they're only meeting every, every two months. And, um, it's, uh, it's like, like you said, it's less burden on the, on the staff. And their auditing, I, that's why I asked about, it says that you're testing of data, what testing are you doing? You, you know, the CFoc members are not auditors, except for one, and, um, I think she should come over to the audit side, but, but that's, that's a different story. So it's not, um, at, we're asking them to do something that they, that they don't have the, uh, the ability or the, the background to be able to test, so.
Well, I'm gonna defend the CFoc, because they have not been given data. They've asked for data, they get it in bits and pieces, and again, the, maybe the way they're asking or what they're asking for might be, uh, different in the way the Audit Committee might be asking, but.
So, can I jump in real quick?
Yeah.
The Audit Committee doesn't ask for, it's the auditors, CRI themselves.
Right.
So I do think there probably is a language issue, because the auditors, CRI, is, it knows the language to ask. So I don't, so I don't want to, like, and, 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 I, I do wanna say this, I don't wanna get into, they didn't get it, they did get it, they didn't get it, no one's, no one is by any means discrediting what the CFoc has done this year, or any years in past. I, this is not an attack on anything, the Chair's right here, this is not an attack on anything that they've ever done whatsoever. I believe, I will, I agree with Ms. Messenger, I believe that if we are asking the voters for dollars, just like we did with the sales tax, it should be treated just like we do for the sales tax. And, and we follow the same thing we do for the sales tax, which is a professional auditor, looks at it, audits it, goes back to the committee, says, here's what we found, that committee then gives a recommendation back to us on, on things that need to be fixed, et cetera. So the, the CFoc is still gonna be, to be able to do the things that Ms. Messenger mentioned, to see, is the spending really helping, et cetera? But the financial part of it is done by a true financial firm that knows and does this on a day-to-day basis. The CFoc still has a place, just like the Audit Committee still has its place, because they are the liaison, and they are the ones that, that will look at it and come back to us with the recommendations. And so I don't think this is a slight on the CFoc by any means. I personally think this is gonna help the CFoc to be able to then free themselves up in time that they have together, or on their own, to not be going line item by line item and things, to be able to take what a, what a, uh, CRI, whoever, whoever we choose for the audit, to do that, and then they can get into, is it working or not? Are we seeing student enhancement? Are we seeing CTE enhancement? Are we seeing, those things like that is what that committee can do, knowing that the financials were done? And so I don't, I don't see this at all as an attack, I'm obviously, I'm speaking for myself, as a slight or anything like that on what the CFoc has done this year or years past. They've done, they've done exactly what they were doing, we just feel like there's a different way to do it. Doesn't mean that, that what they've done is bad, um, by any means.
Right. The difference is, we're paying CRI, and we have a volunteer audit committee. We, the CFoc has been doing it, being mindful of the tax dollars by doing it on their own. If we pay, I, in my opinion, if we brought in an audit firm, it should be independent of CRI, it should be someone totally over here, that the CFoc might make a rec- recommendation. Audit Committee recommended CRI for this, uh, engagement letter that we just voted on, did they not?
Yes, but the Audit Committee is made up of auditors that are, that know what the, what it entails. I, I don't particularly care if we go independent or keep it with CRI, you know, I, that, that to me doesn't, I don't really think that, I mean, we can discuss that, but.
Okay, I would like to know if the Chair has a voice, the Chair of the Audit Committee has an opinion of all of this? If she feels comfortable in coming up and talking, what, how you feel about having an auditor do the work that you have been doing in the past seven, eight years?
I don't have much of an opinion.
You gotta come to the mic, so, yeah.
Sorry, I don't wanna put you on the spot, but.
Put you on the spot.
I would like to have, I would like to have your opinion, you have been a champion for this for a long time.
I think right now with, um, the committee that we have with Eric and with Holly, Holly is the one you're speaking about that is an auditor. Holly is the one that helped with these recommendations, so she is looking at something, she would like to change the report. She added the charter schools, because we wanna see what is going on there with that pie of money. The Audit Committee, to me, I, I, and this is just my humble opinion, if we're gonna do it with the Audit Committee and do that, then there's really no reason to have a CFoc. We're just spinning our wheels, and that's what we're doing right now. If, if you wanna put it under the Audit Committee, just give the whole thing to them, because that's who's, I mean, we're, we're unable to see the full mill. We see STEM and arts, you know, whatever. We do pay the, um, gentleman that does put together these reports out of the millage. And he does have to put together the reports, so it's not like an extra burden, I don't think, on staff. He's already entering all the information into these spreadsheets to send to us. All we're doing is asking to see the information, and it's being withheld. Um, it's very hard to do a report when you have no information. It's hard to do a report to see if the numbers tie out. Our last report, numbers didn't tie out. So, when did we get the information? The day before we presented the report, the correct information. So there's a problem definitely in the communication, if the Audit Committee wants to take it, I say take it, but there's no point in the CFoc spinning our wheels and wasting our time.
So let me just jump in there, nobody said the Audit Committee take it.
No, but I'm just saying, if you wanna do, if you want the auditors to come in and audit, and do that sort of thing, there's no point in having the CFoc. What's the point? Just to look at the arts and the STEM, the twelve percent? We're not looking at what the taxpayers asked us to look at, okay? We're, we're seeing an audited report of something they chose to sample.
Right, but the CFoc would still have the mission of, is it creating student achievement? Are we creating the career technical education opportunities like we talked about in the, in the resolution? So, there's still those things to look at.
And I can see that number, I, I can see getting numbers, but that's what we get, we get a chart with numbers. We don't know where these numbers came from, we don't know anything, if they even are true numbers, we have no idea. They just hand us a chart with figures in it, and we're supposed to just say, okay, looks good. We wanna see where the money's going, and if the numbers are correct, that's what we wanna see.
Um, having been on the Audit Committee and, and be, for a few years, I was the liaison on the sales tax, I can assure you that the Audit Committee does oversee the audit and, and the information coming in, and, and we have had in the past things that we did not agree with, that, you know, that we had discussions, and that had to be, uh, the district had to go back and, and reimburse it, you know, because these were improper expenses. And I think, um, Mr. Smith alluded to that when he was talking about it, so, um.
Comes to the Audit Committee meetings, so they like, like, so that the internal audit would be, as they're going through the report, and the audit, they come back with results, they do it with the Audit Committee, they would be doing with whoever's on the committee in the CFoc too, or like, they would come, they come to the Audit Committee meetings, the, the CRI comes.
And they work very closely with a representative from the Audit Committee, um, the liaison. And so CFoc, I would imagine, would operate in the same way, you'd appoint someone to work with CRI, and I will get to that in a minute. And then collaboratively, they come to the, to the Audit Committee, and if there's something questionable, okay, that, um, that either of them identify, then the Audit Committee wor, or then the Audit Committee works on that, or CFoc would work on that, and, um, and perhaps come back to the Board and say, no, this is, you know, we're not, we're not paying for football on this, so.
Can I say questionable to who?
To them.
CRI, or to the CFoc?
Oh.
But if we don't see the information,
Okay.
how do we know what to question?
All right.
I mean, you know what, I'm, I'm just trying.
I'm, I'm getting at that.
If we're just getting, if we just get a sample of whatever the audit, auditor picked, we just gotta go with what he says, and say, oh, okay.
Then you work with the auditor.
We might have seen, but if we don't see.
You can ask the auditor for it, but you're not gonna ask for one-hundred percent, you'll, you'll ask.
We're only gonna get a few little things to see, if it's something we question or not.
Okay, Mr. Daniels raising his hand. But I also wanna address the, um, the, the question of who the auditor would be. And keep in mind that we would have to go out to bid for another auditor. And that's a biggie on the staff, and, um, just a reminder that auditors, by the nature of their professional designation, are independent. If they're not independent, they're, they're, you know, they're subject to losing their license, you know, um, so it's not, um, I never question CRI's independence, never. Nor Cherry Beckert's, um, any CPA firm that we, that we deal with. So, um, I think you'll get that good information from any auditor that you select, but I, I would certainly recommend just, we've got the money alloc, you know, remember the, uh, on the engagement letter, you know, the items four and five? There, there is money there that, um, that, that can be used. And, um, first year's gonna be tough, first year, there's a lot more, a lot more work in, in identifying, um, exactly what it is that the committee wants and expects. But that's the function of the committee, is to what you want and what you expect. And that's what the taxpayers or the voters want, so, anyway.
Uh, Mr. Daniels, go ahead, you can.
I just wanna say that all whoever is chosen to do the work is doing, is taking the mechanical aspect of doing the testing out of your hands. The criteria that's used, the yes or no answers that they are to determine, everything is determined by the committee. In the Audit Committee, we tell them, this is your scope, this is what you're to look at. We trust them with their professional licenses and their, uh, history and their experience to go in and do the mechanics appropriately. And yes, it's on a sample basis, but after doing this for forty years, samples come real close to looking at one-hundred percent, and yet are much more effective. I'm the one that started this whole mess, I think, by going to visit with your committee. But what I'd anticipated is something to facilitate what you do, not take it over. Just take the mechanics. We don't do it, even though I'm an auditor, I haven't looked at a single invoice since I've been on that committee. I, I set the criteria, I do trust CRI to tell me the truth, what they saw, what they found. We have delayed reports in the past, because what they came back with, we weren't happy. It didn't satisfy our concerns. It didn't satisfy our concerns. And so, we've said, no, we want you to go back and look at this too, or go deeper into this, or look at these invoices that may be troublesome, and they do that. All they are are your hands. They're not taking over, they're not looking to, uh, put you out other than to give you a professional assistance in determining your obligations.
And I, I think what I am having a problem with is what the taxpayers thought they were getting. That's, that's where I'm.
You're looking at a, a sum of money.
Looking at what they voted on.
The, the, the cost of CRI is about seven one hundredths of 1% of the total expenditures. And to, and, and, and in my experience, that's a reasonable amount to come up with a professional look at your responsibilities. It's not out of the way. I honestly think that it's more effective, more efficient, that we probably spend more time and money elsewhere by not doing that. Not just at the district level, but at the, uh, charter school level and then everywhere along. Again, they don't do anything that we don't tell them to do, and they don't make any decisions as to what is that scope, what are the responsibilities? Your charter says what they need to look at. I agree that they ought to provide anything and everything that your committee asks for because they're getting the money. And if you get the money, you gotta answer for it. And, and as I've read the resolution before, I believe there is an obligation, as was said, to provide that information. But instead of going and asking it in a way that isn't accountantese, you've got somebody going and getting, a, a, and they're nothing but your hands. I think you'd actually, after a year, be so glad you did it.
Board members, thank you all very much. Board members, any comments?
Yeah, I do. Ms. Harrigan, first, thanks for, I mean, I know you work hard, and everyone on the CFoc works really hard. And I, I've always said civic engagement, I appreciate anybody who engages civically. But after listening to this conversation, and correct me if I'm wrong, but it sounds like what you're trying to get to is a point where your committee would actually look at every line item of every expenditure towards the millage and then make decisions on whether it was appropriately spent or not? Is that what I think I hear you in trying to get to, or?
Um, and that's not necessarily what we want to do. Now, we were handed a year's worth of line items, um, and it took me six weeks to go through.
Right.
Line by line myself. We just have never seen it before. We don't know what really the money's being spent on. They can tell us, oh, we, it's on STEAM, but then like we found out one time when I was on the committee, they built a building out of it. Well, we went, how, you know, we've got to see something. How, how can we tell if the money's being spent right? If, if the teachers, we're retaining teachers, are we, is it because of the money, is it because of the millage? We don't know. If we don't see any type of data and we're just getting, you know, we spent, you know, 45 million on this. Oh, okay, good, thanks.
So, if you're, if you're, wha, that was, when was that year where they spending on a?
That was in the first couple of years, but we caught it. I mean, we had to. No, it wasn't you, no, 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 it wasn't you. But like, we had to go through, is it okay to buy a robotic arm with this money? Is it okay to do this with this money? There's things, we're trying to figure out what is proper use of the money of taxpayers' dollars, okay? Is, and this is gonna sound really weird, but is buying maxi pads for the flag corps an expense that the taxpayers should be paying out of the millage? Me, I'd say no, but we, we do pay that. You know, these are things like, i- is that really what the taxpayers wanted this money used for? So, how do we know if we can't see anything, what they're using the money on? And it's a catch 22, I mean, whether we want to see line items or whether they just want to tell us we wrapped a van for the, um, band.
Boosters.
Booster, yeah, whatever.
So, would your intention literally be there to go line by line and, and like have the committee look at that one, yes, that one, yes, that one, yes, that one, no? Yes, 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 no, 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 no. I mean, I'm, I'm not trying to be facetious, I'm trying to.
I think it's just, we need some type of scope of where this money is going. I, I think basically, we buy a lot of subscriptions to tutoring programs and different things. I mean, average Joe doesn't know that. I mean, I, I didn't even know until I got line by line item, what we were buying. I understand band instruments, that's great, you know, all these things they need, but there's, we, we're buying other stuff. We're paying substitutes, which is fine. We're, we're paying for trips for teachers, we're paying for buses to football games, we're paying, I mean, a lot out of this millage fund. But we wouldn't know had we not got those line by line items. We, we've been running in the dark for years until this past year to, to get anything.
So, if, if those concerns are out there and, and how come the reports, you know, the last couple of reports that I've read say everything's good? That's what, that's.
Good according to what we've seen.
Good according to what you've seen. Because it, it appears that, you know, th- these are not math problems, it's somebody's judgment, right? When you look at an expenditure and someone in the school system may say, well, yeah, that seems to me like it's in line with the verbiage of the millage. And then four people on the CFoc say, well, we don't think it is, and then you vote. I mean, how are we going to? If you don't have somebody professionally looking at this, like an audit firm that has experience in doing this kind of thing, and that there, someone has to make a determining judgment, how do you? Like, who wins if, if, if the CFoc Committee says, we don't think it was a proper expenditure, but three people in the school system say, yes, it was? And they obviously wouldn't have spent the money unless they thought it was appropriate. How, how do we resolve that then, or?
I think there probably needs to be a list of guidelines.
A list of guidelines?
Something.
Man, on that?
Yeah.
Um, that's one of the advantages of an auditor, an outside auditor, internal auditor, who will make recommendations for procedures. When they see something like maxi pads, you know, um, they're gonna, obviously, someone made a decision, um, that it was okay, and they paid it out of, out of that fund. But, so there needs to be a procedure on who's, who's approving this, you know, and oversight on, within the district. So, um, and then the auditor makes that recommendation and then comes back and, and follows up with, uh, post-audit review. That's one of the advantages of, of a professional auditor. Instead of people looking at it and going, I don't think that's right, and then, um, nothing changes in the following year. I mean, that, that particular expenditure may not, but the, the process is still there for improper questionable, um, items paid for out of, out of a fund. So, um, I think we get more transparency and more productivity, you know, in, uh, in, in overcoming the, uh, the matter.
I, I hear your concerns. I mean, when you tell me the maxi pad thing, I go, well, you know, I can see your point, but the question is, how do we? What's the procedure, as Ms. Foreman talked about, rather than having the people on the CFoc literally going through thousands of lines of, you know, line items? And like Ms. Foreman said, yes, yes, no, 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 yes, 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 no? And then somehow trying to get that into a report and how would that work? Make recommendations to the Board, and then we would go through every one of those and go, we agree with your assessment on the maxi pads, but not on the buses that we rented to go on that sporting trip? You know, I mean, what's the practical way of doing this as, as opposed to getting an Audit Committee or an auditor, as Ms. Foreman said, that would at least put some structure and formality around it? What are your thoughts on, on what I just said? Cause I hear your concerns, but, but go ahead.
Yeah, I just, um, if we have an auditor do it, and they just pick samples here and there, and then we're not, we're, we aren't gonna see different little, we wouldn't have seen that charge. I mean, it would have never made a red flag in my head, like, well, if they're buying this, what else are they buying that maybe the taxpayers didn't think that's what the money was going for? It was to enhance programs. Now, maybe that does. I don't know. But, you know, there was a reason they voted for it, there was a reason they voted for, um, a financial, um, Citizens Financial Oversight Committee to look at it. I just think that we're, we're trying to do what the taxpayers wanted, what they thought was gonna go on. We're trying to provide oversight that the district is spending the money that they gave properly. And that's, that's great, but you have to be able to see some sort of expenditures or data to be able to say that too, not just take somebody else's word for it. And it's fine if, if the auditor wants to take it and do a sample, but are they gonna sample just certain dollar amounts, high dollar amounts? Just look at those? And then, I mean, we could, we could ask that too, but we've got to be able to see, I, I don't know, I guess I'm just, I, I'm rambling, but have to have some sort of.
There can't be, but.
I, I, I know, I know what you're saying too, I get it, yeah. Cause it, that was monotonous, me going line by line from school by school, that was, I'm not doing it again. But it gave me a, a flavor for what the, the money was being spent on. And, and, I mean, most of the time, there weren't any questions. Sometimes it was like, should this be a capital expense, should this, this not? Does this stay with the school, does this just enhance a program? I mean, but if, if you don't see it and we just take samples here and there, then we'll just go with what that says. And I guess the CFoc could still do teacher retention and, um, look at the charter schools.
Include that as a criteria, you could ask them to do that point as well too, and, and work with them as well too.
Okay. But then why?
It, it, and I, but I will say, and I'll go back to what Ms. Foreman said, I think that that's a, a, another huge benefit of having a, a, a professional auditor that says, here are the issues, how do we fix them, goes back and says, did we fix them, like they do with everything else we do with our audit? I, I mean, I guess my concern, my, my point is, if, if we, if we have a professional team that does our $1 billion budget, that does our sales tax, whatever it is per million, why would we not want a professional team looking at some of the financial and, and doing exactly what the committee wants them to do? You can tell them to, to look at, at all of XYZ spending on this, on that. You all get to create that scope. These, these, these people here are really, to me, and I, I could be completely wrong, Mr. Daniels kind of mentioned it, they are the arm that will then go back to the staff and grab the information, compile so that you all don't have to worry about that. They come and give you that, and, and, and if at a meeting, and I, I feel this hour would go, at a place where you're like, wait a minute, what about this? We asked you for this, you don't have that, they're gonna go get that for you, and they're gonna do that for you. I do think, again, we're gonna, like Mr. Tatum mentioned, we're gonna get into a, well, these two people think it's, it was a good expenditure, these two people don't, who's really right? So, I, 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 I don't, that to me, at the end of the day, the taxpayers are gonna have to say, us giving more money to the district, is the district moving in the right place or not? And if you believe it is, then you're willing to do it, if you don't, then you're really not to do it. And, um, we could go back and forth and, and it's gonna be 50, 50 percentage of people think this expenditure should be on this or that. Um, I want to make sure that, and, and in our, in our mis, in the mission, the charter, it never says, it says to provide oversight to ensure proper fiscal stewardship of operating funds provided by the special election approving one mill. And, and it's not, never in any language, oversight again is not detailed, it's just said oversight. So, we're, again, we're gonna sit here and all five of us on the Board have different opinions on what an oversight is. I, I don't know if anybody really expected a committee of citizens that have their own life and jobs, et cetera, to come in and go line item, line item. I just, I don't, I don't know if anyone that voted on that really expected that. Because that's, sounds miserable. I'm not just being honest with you.
Oh, it's fun. I just want to go, I just want to, to you, Mr. Tatum. The CFoc has not been able to get line to line items that I'm aware of until this past year. And they got it on the arts and STEM, correct?
I thought it was requested by CRI.
Right, right, so they got it just the first time, they've gotten actual line to line where she spent six weeks. And to be honest, I spent about that as well, uh, using through Pivot Table and all of that on what was spent. And that's where the red flags started coming in. Okay, we're spending, to her example, but we're also spending a lot on charter buses. And then the question came up on the charter buses, that we are transporting students just across the river, but also the students are, and for uniforms, for band or whatever, dance team, cheerleaders, I don't know. And then this, uh, students' parents are being asked to pay a portion of that busing to go to events as well. So, it's, that's when it came up to where, okay, who's really paying for that charter? You've got the millage paying for a piece, you have a student paying for a piece, and you have maybe a booster club paying for a piece of that. So, that is where the flags started coming up. Who is actually paying for all of that? Is it being three different buckets all into one, uh, one trip? They saw a lot of money going out to buses and to trips and to, uh, little things is just one or two just caught her eye, I believe, that she just mentioned. But they've never had the line to line items like you're saying, and it's a lot of money, we know, we know that. And it can be broken out into, like, uh, Ms. Sellers said, the arts or STEM. It can be broken out to that, it can be broken out to school. And that was another red flag that, uh, I think was brought to the CFoc Committee's, um, attention, was some schools were getting bigger buckets of money than the other school. Well, then it was, okay, well, this one was probably getting more money the year before, so they don't need as much this time. But we didn't have that data to refer to. And if I look at the 2002, 2003 annual report to Ms. Messengers, uh, saying, you know, degreed teachers, they don't even, uh, they don't, they didn't even put that in their report this year because they thought the report was too long and cumbersome. So, they eliminated some of those things. So, the report is a scaled back, which I thought was great for everybody to look at. Uh, and those things in there, they decided they didn't want to, they didn't need to track how many teachers we have with degree, uh, up, upper level or lower levels. Uh, but they started seeing things that was being paid out of there that was questionable. That's why we are where we are today.
Just to clarify, because I've got a longer history, I think, with, with CFoc, and I was the Board Liaison for the first two years that I was on, uh, on the Board. And we did get line by line, Mr. Wagner was overs, you know, overseeing it, and he had someone who literally would make an entry on a spreadsheet for everything that was paid out of, that, that, arts wasn't in there. So, I, I think arts made things a little more, yeah, there, there's a little more give and take on arts, but the STEAM was, uh, or the STEM was pretty, uh, pretty cut and dry. And I have copies of those, you know, I mean, um, you know, of those Excel spreadsheets, and I did not spend six weeks going through them. But, um, but, uh, but that information was available and the, uh, and CFoc did, uh, did have that available to them. I just want to make that clear, so.
Mr. Chair, um, just to, and Chair Harrigan is a good friend, and, and so I, I, my comment here is no reflection on my good friend here, but the, just want to clarify the feminine product comment. The word was Tampa, and it was cut off in the report. And you can see the words could be spelt in a different way. So, just to clarify, there was no millage spent on feminine products, um, in, 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 with millage expenses. It was a cut off portion of, of the report. But I will say that, um, and I've told the, the Vice Chair of the Board this, and I've told Chair Harrigan this, that I, I'm willing to, again, under the, this Board's direction and under my boss's direction, to sit down and, 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 and go through every expense, and, and if there is a question, work with the team, uh, uh, and my colleagues to get those answers and, and clarify. So, um, uh, because. So, um, uh, because, uh, I think, you know, I, I, I think the, the, the millage has, has proven its effectiveness and, and, and I'm willing to, again, under the direction of my boss and of the board, to, uh, to work on doing that line by line work. Because there are, under Ms. Sellers' leadership, there are checks and balances along every path from the classroom, uh, to, uh, uh, the leadership in a school, uh, through, uh, a district department, all the way through Ms. Sellers' team to approve, uh, every expense, uh, that is made with, with, with millage dollars. And, and there is a team, um, that can detail, uh, and walk through every expense from either the classroom to a district approval, from district approval back to that classroom. So, um, and, and we've, we've spent the year, uh, uh, doing that in, in CFAC. And, and if the board wants us to do that, we can continue doing that. But I, I, I will say that, um, uh, I, I, that, again, every, every expense can be, uh, I, I believe, uh, justified through either a financial approval system, through checks and balances, or through the fact that it's made a difference, uh, in, in our classrooms and in our schools.
Thank you. I, I mean, is, I, 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 I don't, again, we could be on this forever, and I think we could roll off on a hundred, a hundred different tangents. I think if, 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 from a board standpoint, it seems to me like there is a consensus potentially on, having a, a auditor, whether it be CRI or somebody else, come in and they would be under the direction of the CFAC. And the CFAC can direct them to do what they want, their scope of work, et cetera. And they can choose that because we're giving CFAC the ability to choose what that auditor's scope is and to work with them. You know, I don't think we're up here saying, we only want this looked at, only want that looked at. I want CFAC to tell the auditors, here's our scope. We want you to look at every single this and every single that, or this portion this year, next year this portion. And, uh, and we'll go from there. Is there any other, I mean, yeah?
Um, just, I, I, I agree, and I wanna make sure, um, we're really clear that, you know, um, that we still want it to be overseen by this committee. That we want that committee to guide the audit, what to look at, the parameters, all of that, for the committee to be in control of that, not this board, not the district, the committee. Uh, with the assistance of the audit committee, maybe to help figure out how to set those parameters and those types of things. But that it would be in the Citizens Financial Oversight Committee's hands to make sure that there is that independence. Cause I think that that's part of the concern too. You wanna be able to say, no, we looked into it. I get it, I totally can't blame you, like, I think we all wanna say that. We, I mean, I wholeheartedly believe in this millage and have for, since day one, so I, I agree with you. And that's, the goal here is to make that easier, clearer, and better for the Citizens Financial Oversight Committee to be able to say that. That is the goal, at least from me. Um, and I think that this is a tool to assist you to do that. So, I, I wanna make it really clear, like, that, that the goal would be that it's in the Citizens Financial Oversight Committee's hands to determine the scope, that, that, all of those pieces to ensure that the committee does feel comfortable with the audit they get, just like the audit committee does. And they don't bring it to us until they feel comfortable with it. I, I want the same thing for you. I just wanna make sure I'm really clear with that. A hundred percent support this committee doing what they feel like they need to do in order to feel comfortable. Use the auditor to help you do that. Um, when it comes to hiring an outside auditor versus the one we already have, I don't think that makes sense. We're gonna already go out for bid, well, whatever the, the board chooses at that time as an internal auditor, that internal auditor should work with the Citizens Financial Oversight Committee, just as they do with the audit committee. Uh, I, I don't think it makes sense to use a whole different auditor to do that. That, that whoever we choose as our internal auditor is going to understand the district, understand who to talk to, to get whatever information they need. Um, they're gonna have, the, the channels already built in, they're gonna know what, what the district calls that or this or that, the appropriate language. It just seems like it will behoove the Citizens Financial Oversight Committee to stick with whomever the board chooses as the internal auditor. And to be clear, like, the internal auditor, like, that's, that's, once again, to the board, that's not to the district. Do you know what I mean? It's not, it's, just, there's, there is those layers of separation to ensure that the information you're getting is not manipulated. It is, it is truthful, you know what I mean? Cause I hear, like, that's another concern of yours, like, well, how do we know what numbers will vault? That's one of the things that the auditor, that will be independent and serving the board, can assure that that's happening. And so that you can assure the public, no, no, this is happening and this is how I know. And I know that it feels uneasy, right? Cause you're handing it over, but like Mr. Daniel said, I don't think he could have explained it any better, they're just gonna be your hands. You're gonna direct it, right? You're gonna say, these are the things that we wanna make sure are looked into, these are the concerns we've had. And in the past, when there have been concerns, like the buses came up, we got a legal opinion. So, you know, if there is a concern, like, once again, the auditor will know how to ensure that that doesn't continue to happen. And also how to ensure that there's a legal opinion justifying it if it needs that, or here's now a new procedure so that that doesn't continue to happen. I think, once again, I think it, hopefully, it would be a good partner, is, is what I would hope, so.
Yeah, I would suggest.
Is that your phone?
Telling me to stand up, so, you know. The, uh, I just would suggest, and we may have to do this in the charter, but we have a representative of the CFAC committee involved in the, um, in the selection of the internal auditor, okay? Give them a seat at the table. Yeah, yeah, and I don't know whether you want one, whether you want the chair, or a designee, or if you want the whole darn committee. You know, have them, have them sit in on, you know, not sit in, but, but have a say.
Participate in the selection.
I think the chair makes sense. I was also gonna say, I, I, maybe we need to read through the charter to figure out if there's any other wording that we need to change if we are gonna make this change. But maybe that's something for the attorneys to, to do.
I, that, so that was gonna be my next step, was gonna be attorneys. We're obviously going to, we wanna add in that the CFAC is going to be using uh, an internal auditor to help with their, their, their process.
Of their recommendation.
I wrote something.
Perfect.
Yeah, okay. Um, and it would say, with board approval, okay, because the board has to approve. The committee may receive assistance from an independent contracted audit firm that will be responsible for the report's conclusions, um, something like that, so.
I don't know if I would agree with all of that, because the whole point was the financial pieces. I'm still allowing the Citizens Financial Oversight Committee to look at some of the other pieces, so. That would be some of the conclusions, but once again, I don't really wanna parse words today because I feel like that's an attorney thing. But I do like that you've thought of something.
Their next meeting is?
Twenty eighth.
The seventh, no, no, wait. No, you have, your next meeting is?
August twenty eighth.
I have the seventh, so we might need to confirm that.
We had to change it because, didn't we change it, Laura, August twentieth? Yeah, we changed it the last week, August twenty eighth, August twenty eighth.
But, you, whatever the date is, what, what's, what do you?
My, my, um, I think the whole committee needs to have a, have input on how they proceed with this. You're saying that the consensus of the board is to have them, have CRI basically start being their audit representative, is what, are you saying that now or not?
I mean, I think that's, I, I don't think they're being their audit representative, they're, they're nothing but, they're, they are the ones that are gonna be performing the function of communicating with the staff, gathering whatever the scope is that the committee decides. They are then gonna go do the work so that the work isn't turned on to the committee members to actually physically do.
I still, right, I still believe, going back to item number two of their recommendation to the school board is getting a hundred percent of the dollars spent, that they can see that. So, then they would have, uh, materials to say, hey, we spent this much here, we would like you to pull this as a sample for us. They're still gonna need the reports on a quarterly basis and, you know, and two, I think they've done a really good job in writing a report, reconstructing it to what we have this time. But I still believe that they need the quarterly reports in, in its entirety. And, and, and to include charter, uh, whatever they provide will probably be a whole different bucket of data. But I still believe that their request to get a hundred percent of expenditures is a, a reasonable request.
So, to clarify, because again, we keep talking about quarterly reports. To me, when we say quarterly report, we're talking about a summary of dollars spent, right? So, Ms. Sellers and her team can provide a pie chart that says, in Q1, this much money was expended.
I don't think that's the intent of.
Okay, well, but, but, but if the intent is line by line, then we're right back where we started. And, and, and.
So, I, I think we need to allow the CFAC to, allow them to, to get a scope, right? If we're telling them that we would like for you to use an internal auditor, an, an actual firm, they get to set the, just like the audit team, the audit committee comes us with an engagement letter, and the, uh, CRI says, here's our engagement letter, and we could say, you know what? Uh, facilities and maintenance, nope, don't do that, right? We can say that with their engagement letter. So, the CFAC can work with Mr., CRI, maybe it's Mr. Smith, I don't know, and say, here's what we want done. And then it comes back to us and we say, nope, I don't want you looking at that. Or yes, hey, what about add this? So, we're not, I don't think we're defining any scope of what the CFAC is doing today. I think the CFAC's gonna be able to work with CRI and say, here's what we want done. CRI will say X amount of dollars, et cetera, just like the engagement letter, come back to us, and we say, yes, we accept that or no, we don't. I don't, I don't, I don't know why this is any different than any other audits we're doing. I think we're making this way more difficult than it needs to be, right? Go ahead, Ms. Chapman.
One, uh, suggestion, uh, could be that, uh, and, uh, Chair, there's a lot of chairs and vice chairs. Chair Harrigan, correct me if I'm wrong, but, uh, the CFAC is currently, uh, trying to finish their twenty-three, twenty-four report. They need one more piece of data on that, which is the ending of the twenty-three, twenty-four financial data, which Ms. Sellers' team is wrapping up. And once it's board approved.
But they are still in year end.
And so, once that's board, I think the, how we've been operating is, once that's board approved, we get that to CFAC right, right away. And that will give a chance for CFAC to finish, and again, correct me if I'm wrong, but it, that will give, give CFAC a chance to finish their twenty-three, twenty-four millage report. One suggestion could be, we, we continue on how, how this has been working. Uh, and then perhaps, again, this is just Kevin and a suggestion, is that then perhaps, starting January first or something like that, in the, in this new twenty-four, twenty-five cycle, that perhaps this, this new way could, could, could begin, and, and we can let CFAC finish their twenty-three, twenty-four report. And then perhaps then move to this in a, in a twenty-four, twenty-five cycle, starting.
Absolutely, I had no intention of doing this right this minute, to finish twenty-three, twenty-four. So, I, so I apologize, I don't think we ever mentioned that, nobody, but I absolutely do not believe it's right now. That's why I'm saying, I think some of this ins and outs and things we're talking about can be discussed with the CFAC committee and the firm that's doing the internal audit. And then it's brought back to us, just like we do everything else with engagement. I, so, I don't think this is going to hinder, I don't think this is going to, to lessen what the CFAC does. I think this is just a tool to make communication, et cetera, the way things are brought in faster and better. I, I, I really, I think, yes, like Ms. Foreman, I think it's gonna be a little struggle in the first year, you're figuring out scope things. But I think in a year or two from now, we're gonna say, why didn't we do this from the very beginning? Because we are talking about taxpayer money and, and a good chunk of it. And if we do this for sales tax, we do this for other things, we should be doing it. And I mean, what I mean by that is a professional person helping grab data and do data under CFAC's direction of what scope they want. So, I, so I think that us passing it right now doesn't change anything for this year, they still gotta finish what they're doing, absolutely. And, and when the time is right that they're done, they can get together, figure out what they want their scope to be, what they want CFAC, or, uh, the, uh, auditors to do, come back to us, and we get to approve or not approve, just like we did Tuesday with CRI's engagement letter.
Just to be clear for the chair, to close out twenty-three, twenty-four school year, you had asked for data on, in May, and you were told it would be done whenever, uh, around the sixteenth of May, you haven't got that, you're still waiting for that, and you want entire data, not just the, the twelve or fourteen percent that you looked at, you want all of it, the whole entire year end, all of it. Do you want that line by line? That's what I'm asking, I guess, did you want that report to be the line by line? Or do you want the last quarter to, well, the final, you want all of it, I'm guessing? I don't know if you want line to line, that'd be.
Well, the quarterly report, we get line by line the same way, the same.
Is it a hundred percent of that quarter of millage, or is that just a certain?
It's just the stems and arts.
Okay, so you want to change that to be all of it?
Be all of it, yeah.
Well, well, hold on, hold on, hold on. I don't mean to jump in anything. Nobody, we have, as a board, had that, this has not, has not been discussed. If we wanna give them, how we wanna give them the fifty-one percent that's going to teachers and the X amount of ass me, I'm not saying I do or don't. But I just wanna, we're not, we haven't said, yes, hey, that's still a recommendation. I'm okay with giving it to them, but I believe that it's a, if we, if we had ten dollars, we showed them the fifty, fifty-five dollars and seventy-five cents, went to the teachers and went to payroll and went to that right allocation. I, I, I find it, I don't think that the CFAC needs to spend their hours going through three thousand some odd employees and it, and individual line items, and did Chad get paid the referendum he should have every check? I, I don't, I don't know if that needs to be done. I'm okay with them seeing it all fifty-one, I don't, I don't think it just needs to be granular like that.
I, I believe the initial information that we would be giving them, just like we gave them for twenty-two, twenty-three, it's not that granular.
Gotcha.
When we first send it to them at the end, like, the data now that's, we're ready to send them through quarter four without the year end closings, and that, that one's ready to go, cause we knew of this request. It's more or less like the journal entries or something that hits the general ledger side. The detail that y'all are talking about here today is further inside, um, the, um, the, uh, human resource module. And, and that would be what auditors would then request and look at. But the information that would be going to them would capture the payroll expense, but you're not gonna see specific people's at this point. And I'll make sure I clarify with my staff before it does go, but it's just like what's been given to them for the other, uh, year ends.
Gotcha, okay. I mean, board, is everybody?
Yeah, I mean, each employee may have twenty-six checks, and if you've got six thousand employees, you know, or say, three thousand teacher, six thousand teachers, you know.
I mean, I think singularistically is what they want.
That's insane, you know, you don't want that, so.
No, I don't think that's the intent. I think the intent, if you had five employees at the year end, it got, you know, whatever the supplement was, you would see a whole number, not twenty-six entries, a whole number for one employee, that would be my thing.
But that's three thousand some odd employees, so it's not just a number.
I don't know how they do it.
I mean, if the, again, the, the bulk of the millage is salary and, is salary payments to employees, we can, you know, we can provide, you know, again, summary data or whatever. But we are, you know, we are now generating something new that we weren't generating before. And, and, and very respectfully, I, I am concerned about timelines because we're talking about quarter four data, that's year ended June thirty, but. But this finance team has specific federal and state reporting requirements, including the fact that last weekend, in order to prep everything for the 7/23 meeting, I had people here on the weekend, we had finance staff texting each other after midnight Saturday night, working through to get the budget book ready for the board to approve everything on Tuesday so that we can meet our state requirement. So I'm just very concerned because what I hear is, we're still waiting on, but I, the team has to comply with their state and federal reporting requirements. That has to come first. And so, you know, I just want to be clear because I can't tell you how many nights last year Ms. Sellers and I are here in the building and she goes, I gotta go down to the fourth floor and send all those people home because they've been here since 8 o'clock this morning and it's 8 or 8:30 at night. So I just want to be sensitive to, we're sitting here saying, we're still waiting on this, but it's not like, it's not like the folks who are here are not working really hard to meet all of these different requirements from different agencies, different perspectives. We just need time.
I'd like to make the comment, this is, this whole topic that we're talking about is what happens when you have a bureaucracy that has to function in a large organization like this, but it can't be, it can't be perfect. And I've used this term before in the Air Force, the term is, wouldn't it be nice if? Wouldn't it be nice if we had a group of citizens that could look at every dollar that was spent from the millage and make sure that it was spent appropriately? And that would be nice, but it's not bureaucratically efficient to do that. It's not reasonable to do that. It doesn't, it's like the unfunded mandate that comes down from the state. Wouldn't it be nice if every time there was a student on campus, we had gates locked and everything was guarded and we had guardians there to make sure that everything was safe? Yes, it would be, but the the expense and the effort required to do that, there has to be a trade off somewhere. So, you know, for instance, we have audits and the reason that we have, when the auditors come in, they don't look at every expenditure that's been done within a certain area, they do a sample. Because to make it efficient and reasonable, they can't look at every expenditure within a certain area. They just have to sample, I don't know, 5% of the payroll things that they're looking at and they go, well, based on looking at 5% randomly, we project that, based on their professional qualifications, that the payroll is being done correctly. So it would be nice if we had a citizens oversight committee that could look at every single expenditure and make sure that every dollar spent was within the intent of the millage language, although that's up for interpretation too. But it's not a bureaucratically reasonably efficient way of doing business. So we have come up with auditors and other systems like this to at least get as close to the ideal as we can without overburdening our staff, as Dr. Weisong is talking about, to try to get to the ideal. The ideal would be nice to obtain, but it's not bureaucratically reasonable. So we have processes and auditors in place to try to get as close as we can and assure ourselves as much as we can that things are being done correctly. Yes, ma'am?
Well, I want to point out on audits, they may start with a random sample of say 5% as you gave the example. And if they detect out of that 5%, a certain number of exceptions, they expand it, okay? They expand the, they go and get another 5% and test those. And they'll keep going till they have, you know, have a reasonable assurance that the totals are correct. And as far as the employees go, I'm not sure what you would do with that information on the, on their payroll and how much, you know, employees got in terms of the stipend. I don't know what you do with it, you know, you go, yep, here's a number, it's not 51% and it's not gonna be 51% as you know because of time and people, open jobs. So there's really no, I don't see the purpose in a total. And I certainly think it's inefficient to do, to do line by line or employee by employee, so.
I'm gonna take a 10-minute recess. I mean, I tried not to because I know we're going and we're kind of going through this, but I do want to take a 10-minute recess and come back and and then solidify the verbiage, how we want to move forward with charter, etc. And we can finalize how we want to give them the full 100%. So we're, it's 11:13, let's just get back at 11:25. So, all right, so let's, let me, I kind of want to, I feel like we're towards the end to wrap this up. Let me first say by data they're wanting to give, can we give them the 100% of, here's what the millage brought in, here's where we sent it?
Correct. I've confirmed with my finance staff, they have quarter four, data through quarter four, ready to send to CFoc. We were waiting for this meeting. It does not include year end. Technically, it doesn't have all of the year end yet because we haven't closed, so we'd want to make sure we capture that. But we could send that data after this meeting if you guys wanted them to have that or to be auditing or to do their review of that, that kind of a thing.
And year end is not till that September, like August?
We don't have to wait till the board, when we bring the statements to the board, as soon as we actually do the closing, which we are getting close to it. But we could give them at least through the quarter four that has it. It won't have charter school data because their reports aren't technically required to be provided to us until August 30. So we would have to follow up with the charter school.
Well, once they give you that.
Yep, as soon as they.
Yeah, whatever we have now to them and then, right, and then when charter comes in.
So, so we've got that taken care of. They're gonna see the whole pie. The, the second part of this is, is it definitely seems like we're in consensus, we want to strengthen what the CFoc is doing and give them an audit team to help them with the number wise and gathering data, etc. I know Ms. Foreman had a blurb to add potentially to the charter. As a board, I think that, I don't want to say hash, I think that we give that to the attorneys, say, I think she's on the right track for sure, but we give this to Mr. Dai, say, tweak this, you know, to fit this into what the current charter is and then you come back with us. Again, I don't, I want this to be, I don't want, I don't think any of us want to shove this on you right now as you're finishing up the 2324 report. Finish what you're doing, you guys are already. Finish what you're doing, you guys are already almost there, you're on the last leg of the race. So this will be something that, that is moving on to 24, 25. Your group will be able to really decide what the scope is, how do we want to integrate CRI? And we've already got hours set in, like Ms. Forman said. We already have hours set into a scope now of what the Audit Committee gave us with CRI that we can say, CRI, you've got X amount of hours from that area four and five, I think is what they were called.
Right.
And the CFOC can say, hey, we wanna take all those hours on this, 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 this. And then we, we come back and approve that, and that's it. Is that okay with the board, that going forward with the charter?
Yeah, just to be clear, like, the expectation is that it's not happening now.
Correct.
That it's something in the future, that there's gonna be multiple opportunities for everyone to weigh in on what's gonna be put into the charter, to fine tune it and all those types of things. And then multi, and time to then work out the committee working with the auditor and all the other, I mean, there's, there's, I just wanna elaborate, there is time to work through all that. This is just the beginning discussions of what that's gonna look like.
Absolutely.
Yeah, I just wrote this because I don't want the charter to say that they must use assistance from, you know, because.
You want the board to be able, yeah.
Yeah, the, down the road, a board may say, no, you know, we're giving it back, you know, this isn't working. So, so I want it to be flexible.
If you will share that, if you will share that, right, or if you wanna type it, you can do that. But if you wanna share that with Mr. Dye, then he can figure out some language and then that can come back to us as a board. We can decide how we wanna tweak that or work that into the, the charter. And then the CFOC has of now just continue to do what you're doing and get the data when it's available to them so they can see that stuff and with the charter and.
Yeah, like, I'd like to see, I would actually even ask the chair what language might be needed to the charter as well, although we do the charter, but even, we have a red line here, so we're gonna add more to this the next time around. So we're not gonna approve this one now, we're gonna wait.
There's no approval right now.
Right, we're gonna wait, right.
But, yeah, they redlined this, correct, the committee redlined this, yeah. I mean, it's very minimal stuff.
Right.
Yes, this will be involved in the next one that we, we add our language.
Right, that's what I wanna make sure.
This will still be in. Their recommendation to the charter, instead of saying 60 days, it's the fourth meeting of the committee.
Right. And I would like, like I said, they made this recommendation, I'd like to give them the opportunity to make the recommendation to incorporating audit, independent auditor.
Yep, my, my, as we move, and again, this isn't for this year right now currently, but as we move forward, the, the, yeah, this is for 24, 25. So, well, I'm saying this charter, when we approve it, is not to finish out the 23, 24, it's for the 24, 25. My question is, and we don't have to answer this now, but their suggestion of the 60 days and the fourth meeting, I don't know, I mean, is that, does that jive with the way that we report and do our things anyways? That is something that I don't think I'd wanna discuss right now. I want the finance team to look at this and tell us what, what, you know, because what I think may be acceptable, the fourth meeting of the committee, if their fourth meeting's on May 31st, and we don't close till July 31st, then you ain't getting your report. So I wanna make sure it, it all jives with, with what we do.
Yeah, that, that particular part of it, you know, there, there may be times that the committee meets more frequently than every other month. So the definition of saying of a meeting, you know, is it perhaps, if they wanna do it by meeting, it would be a regular meeting. But I do have concerns about the fourth meeting of the committee, which would be eight months. And I think that that's, that, that's an awful long time.
Well, I think the intent was no later than 60 days is what it said before.
Right.
And that would be just too tight. That's only one meeting, that would only be one meeting after the books closed.
Alright, well, four, one or four, like, that's.
Right.
Well.
I think that between finance and, and, and the chair of the committee can decide.
You may wanna clarify how, how often the meetings are because Sep, around the, around the second week of September is when the state requires, and that's when we get the annual financial report approved by the board. But if you were to have, if you're talking about that issue in annual report, if you end up having weekly meetings, this fourth meeting, insert versus an approximate set of days, may be too tight for you guys 'cause then you're only giving yourself, if you had weekly meetings, only four weeks. So you may want to have a period of time versus, which was what you had for the 60 days. So if you were, if your intent was trying to have it for, if, if you had bi-weekly, sorry, if you had once a month meetings, if you meant four months, then you may just wanna do 30 days times four, you know what I'm saying? You might wanna have a period, 'cause I, I don't know the frequency of these meetings. When you change it to say fourth meeting of the committee, it could be sooner or much later. Do you see what I'm conveying with that?
Yeah, I mean, if, yeah, if you only, if you get everything done in three meetings, I, I, I agree, I don't know if a meeting, but I do understand that we had to have something in there that says, hey, we want this report by X amount date, right? And I think that's what we're going for. So that can be tweaked, I mean, that doesn't have to be discussed now. I mean, I, I, obviously the committee came up with the fourth meeting, so I'm assuming you all thought that was sufficient.
Because we meet every two months. So if she closed.
And this, but this is just giving us the annual report.
Yeah.
Yeah, so this is giving us, and so that's my, so my concern would be no later than the fourth committee meeting. If you happen to meet more because you need to, now it's like, wait a minute, it's the fourth. So, I mean, we can tweak, I, that's very.
And you guys might wanna know.
Ninety days, 120 days, you can change it to just days, I mean.
Yeah.
There is an audit gauge or a statute that does require audit. So if this was like an audited kinda thing, the district's annual financial statement, there's a, in, in, out there in statute, it's supposed to be completed within nine months of, after the end of the fiscal year, which makes, makes it March 31st. You could always, that's, I think, where the March 31st deadline had come up with the CFOC.
Oh, could it match that?
Just, just to match that, that's where I'm thinking why, why it used to always be, have it done by March 31st. And I think that that's where they, so that's, might be the intent.
Right, but getting the quarterlies going forward, getting quarterly reports of whatever, 100% of whatever you used in that quarter and the next quarter, and the next quarter is gonna lead up to that. And that's what I think the whole intent was, putting the date. By the time they got their fourth quarter, they're hoping to have the report done relatively quickly.
Yeah, it should have the number of days though. I mean, you may have a meeting that doesn't officially meet because you don't have a quorum.
Right.
So then it's really.
So we could do days, we could do the days.
CFOC, in this 23, 24 schedule, the, the finance has been delivering those. So like, they got it up to quarter, quarter three already, 'cause the, the group has been given it. However, remember, it wasn't established that salary information was, was given, it was just the other. So this will be the first time they'll see the entire fiscal year's salaries and the additional last fourth quarter of the other expenditures that they have been seeing. So it'll be, they should be able to get that one through pretty quickly, knowing that.
Yeah.
And then the other change was just a spelling?
Yeah.
Okay.
I do have another item on, on the charter that I would like, first, I'd like the attorneys to weigh in on. Because of the number of members, we say that you're gonna have no less than seven. So if, let's say, hope it never happens, but we only have three members on that committee, okay, three voting members, is the committee basically defunct because we cannot possibly have a quorum out of a seven-member committee? Is that, am I thinking that through correctly?
It would be my recommendation that you comply with the charter to have the minimum of seven. So if, if for some reason you lost down to three, then at the next reasonable board meeting, I would appoint four more.
And, and I think their concern is that we can't, we can't, we're trying.
We have a hard time.
How many members do we have now?
Looking at that, with Mr. Chapman resigning. One, two, three, four, five. We have five voting members right now, and two with, right, Ms. Barbara and Dylan.
So that means you would have to have four of your five people.
Right.
To create a quorum. Do we wanna consider reducing that from seven to a minimum of five? I mean, you could have, you could have more than that.
You could, I, I would say, I would, I would think the committee would be okay with that.
You can have as many as you want, but a minimum.
Right.
Yeah.
Five plus the two non-voting, the union reps.
Well, they don't, they would not constitute.
Right, I'm saying five.
Yeah.
Right, plus those two. So I would, I would recommend that, if I were as liaison, I would recommend that to the chair. But I don't know if we wanna take that to a full committee, I think it would be a great change, in my opinion.
Okay, yeah.
And two, it was determined that they could do teams, they could do the team, come in through teams.
Yes.
Right, so I would be happy with changing that to a five instead of seven members. So if you could modify that as well, Mr. Penley.
And then just not have a maximum.
Right.
You can keep maximum of 12.
Yeah, we should, we should have a maximum.
Yeah, 12, yeah, I mean, more than 12.
Huh, you say that, but it started with, 18.
It did start with 18.
We already reduced it once.
Yeah, yeah.
Didn't we?
Yeah, I think it was at nine at one point, I thought.
But if we could find 12 good, faithful, you know, citizens to come in and serve.
I think by getting the data on a regular basis will attract people to maybe even come back that has served before. 'Cause like I said, the data was a little hard to get, maybe the language of asking for it was not what, cross, cross. But I think five is great.
Did you have anything?
Great.
No, that's it.
I agree with Ms. Forman on that.
So we'll take a look at that charter with all the red lines, with the addition of what?
Minimum of five.
Of what we added as well.
I'm sorry, Mr. Chair.
Yep.
Did we reach a consensus on go, changing the language for 60 days in lieu of the fourth meeting?
Well, the 60 days doesn't give them enough time.
Right, is, is the board at consensus on what you want?
Say 90.
I would say 90, 90 is probably.
Is 90 days good with you, Chair? Chair?
Ms. Harrigan?
90 days.
90 days after the final report.
After the final report.
So the final report is due September, beginning of September. So that gives you, or if, if you need.
Got holidays, Mr. Chapman was saying maybe what, January 31st of the next year?
Okay.
Yeah, we were just thinking.
Yeah, that's what, oh, yeah.
Colloquial, what are we, is it called? But either January 31st or the February 1st of the following year could be the language.
Okay.
Something, because of holidays, edits.
It's fine.
Back to school, yeah, I like that.
February 1.
February 1 is what we're gonna.
Alright, anything else, Chair? Anyone else, no?
Haven't we done enough?
No, listen, I'll be honest with you, I think, I, I, I think that this strengthens what we're doing, to be quite honest with you. I think that CFOC is, I think that it's going to release some burden on the data and things like that. I, I, I really do think that this is going to strengthen the oversight because I think we're, we're now having a, an actual professional audit do the, that part. And the CFOC can, can really get down to how are we using it, is it benefiting our students, is it benefiting the district? Which I think we've proven that it has, but I think this is good. I think this is only gonna add to the oversight and, and our taxpayers can be, rest assured that, that a professional audit team is looking at it just like they do with the rest of our budget. So, good stuff. So I thank you all, everybody, for being here. We'll see you, oh, Dr. Wyson, do you have one thing before you end?
I'll just finish your sentence.
Yeah.
Mr. Chairman, we'll see you all on Tuesday, July 30th at 5:05. We have the public hearing on the tentative budget. We have a policy for final approval. And then with the concurrence of the chair, board members, we've added two topics to that agenda and we are publicly noticing that in the paper. The first will be an overview of the school grades results, which came out yesterday. And then the second will be an item related to some flexibility that's in statute related to three of our schools as a result of those grades that I'm gonna request from the board. So we've added that to the agenda for Tuesday, the 30th at 5:05.
Awesome, thank you. Alright, with that, we are adjourned.